So, thank you for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Our flag is a symbol of freedom around the world, and thank you so much. And remember, I say this to all the girls, come by my house during cookie season because my wife and me love the cookies. Thank you. Thank you, girls. That brings us to Presentations, Item 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to consider? Presentations 1 and 2?
Move Item 1 and 2.
The second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Madam City Clerk, please read the title of Item Number 1.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion passes unanimously, and the title of Item Number 1 is New Employee Introductions.
Madam City Manager, please introduce our wonderful new employees.
All right, our new employees will be introduced by our Deputy City Manager, Sean McGovern.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to introduce first Noah Dugan. Noah joins the city as a full-time accounting technician. Noah actually got his start here, working in Lake Forest as an intern in our finance office, and he recently earned a Bachelor's in Business Finance from UC Riverside, and he likes to spend his free time with friends and family when he's not working here at the city. So, welcome Noah. Next are a few familiar faces. So Doug Erdman, who recently started as the city's Public Works Director and City Engineer. You likely recognize Doug because he served as our Assistant Director and City Engineer under Director Wheeler. Doug graduated from UCI with a Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineering and is a licensed engineer. He also serves as one of the Directors over at the South Coast Water District. Welcome Doug. And lastly, we have T Merritt, who joins us as our new City Clerk. Prior to that, T served here since 2023 as the Assistant City Clerk. T holds a Master's in Public Administration and is currently in pursuit of a PhD in Political Science. And in her free time, I guess this is also work, she is an adjunct instructor at the University of Laverne, also in Political Science. So, welcome T.
So I guess this is my time to ask, um, could you, do we do any speeches? Oh, I'm just teasing everybody. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. That brings us to Item Number 2. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read the title of Item Number 2.
The title of Item Number 2 is Proclamation Declaring the Month of October as National Community Planning Month.
Okay, Madam City Manager, please introduce item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Zia Marasolis, our Assistant Planner, up to the podium for our presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
October marks National Planning Month, a time to recognize the vital role planning plays in shaping vibrant and resilient communities. This year, the Planning Division has created an interactive map showcasing long-range planning efforts which have helped shape Lake Forest into the city it is today. Beginning with, beginning with the Opportunity Study, which provided over $200 million in city benefits for the city hall, the sports park, multiple affordable housing projects. In recent years, the city approved mixed-use zoning, which is a smart growth strategy. Today, we are seeing the impacts of this implementation through the incoming Costco project and the Chase Mixed-Use Building. If you would like to access this map, it's on our Planning Division page. Thank you. I'd like to thank the elected officials, the residents of the community, and city staff on all that they've contributed to the City of Lake Forest's planning efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, City of Lake Forest, we went from 30,000 to almost 95,000, but the fact is that we've kept the charm, and that's partly to do because of the city planning. So, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the job you do. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speakers for this?
We do not, Mayor.
So, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I believe we have some members of our Planning Division here today. Can they all wave? And I know they would love to take a picture with the City Council.
All right.
So could we have them come up?
Come, please come forward.
Yes, I know, I'm gonna put this picture on my fridge.
We, as Lake Forest residents, appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get some, those buttons, yeah. Come on up.
So we have our proclamation. We have a proclamation from the city, but the fact is, this comes from the City Council, but I think the whole city appreciates you guys so much because, you know, I always say this, that we've kept our small-town charm even though we've grown a lot, and that largely do because of the city planning. So, on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, we'd like to present this proclamation designating Community Planning Month, October 25th, Community Planning Month. So congratulations and thank you so much from the City Council and the residents of Lake Forest.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Cool.
And as the future goes, we're nearly a built-out city, so the fact is, now we have infill. So it's all the more important that we have a wonderful city planning department, and so thank you guys for that. Okay, that brings us to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card and give it to the City Clerk. Your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. This council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during this public comment period. If you leave your contact information, staff will contact you addressing the issues raised during your comment. When you are called to speak, come to the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the light turns green. The green light will remain on for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers have one minute left to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, please conclude your thoughts and return to your seat. A timer will not be displayed. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak?
We have, Mayor. We have several public commentators, and our first one is Mike Davison.
In a recent City Council meeting, fire risk mitigation was discussed by California Department of Insurance in Southern California Edison. OCFA and UC ANR have had recent community presentations on fire hazards and risk management. CalFire has released new, more accurate fire hazard maps earlier this year, but insurance companies create their own fire hazard maps complicating risk management efforts. We all aim to preserve and grow our tree canopies and green spaces while adapting to California Resource Management Plans and ensuring older properties comply with WOLO codes. This Thursday, we have the annual H2O for HOAs conference where much of this is discussed, and I would urge the City Council members to attend if possible. It is always an excellent source for information. The point is, we have a lot of complicated and conflicting landscape changes coming that are best coordinated as a city to include our HOAs, businesses, and homeowners. Our HOAs probably manage almost as much green areas as the city while frequently struggling with less available expertise. I would like to suggest that Lake Forest add an urban forest manager to the staff to track changes, changing requirements, and to help coordinate efforts and share resources between park management, HOAs, and businesses. Working as a team, we can better address issues such as coordinated plant pallets, managing pests using integrated pest management practices while reducing pesticides, utilizing better non-chemical techniques for improving soil management and carbon capture, organizing defensible fire zones, and managing open space zones, areas that are, that have been neglected. They've been talking about that in recent meetings. Improving native wildlife habitats, and organizing campaigns to help reform state insurance guidelines. Fire mitigation and insurance risk evaluation should be using the same hazard maps. Good community fire mitigation practices should yield better fire insurance rates. There is a lot we can do to improve our green spaces while improving water conservation and fire mitigation. The city has some excellent expertise, but there are also wonderful resources within our community and businesses that would likely participate in such a project. We can always accomplish more as a team, but we need good coach to build and-
Would you please conclude your comments?
Oh, yeah, we need a good coach to organize this, and I'm hoping that the city would provide such a coach.
Thank you for your comments and your suggestions.
Our next public commenter is Sean Fletcher.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Sean Fletcher, 23-year resident. You know me as someone that takes the appearance of our city seriously, having organized community cleanups over the last five years. I'm here tonight to discuss the critical issue of maintaining the cleanliness and presentability of our shopping centers and business properties here in Lake Forest. Our commercial properties are more than just a place to shop, they are the face of our community. This is where we welcome visitors, where El Trodon get their first jobs, and where we spend our hard-earned money. Yet far too often, we see overflowing trash bins, neglected landscaping, and litter around the city, the parking lots, and the surrounding planners, much of which eventually ends up in our city streets. This isn't a nice or, it's a profound detriment to our city. This issue even more pronounced when the city has fast food, when the center has fast food in the area. When there are several centers and my community cleanup volunteers regularly bring up being horrid, including Sycamore Plaza, my focus is on the four main commercial centers around El Toro and Rockfield, the unofficial entrance to our city. The community cleanup members I work with are consistently picking up buckets of trash along the perimeter and landscape of these four centers, seeing the illegal signage, such as the ones in the front here, as well as making notes of the filthy conditions of their back alleys. When a property owner neglects their center, it sends a clear message. They don't value the city or the citizens of the surrounding community. This deterioration leads to a vicious cycle. Failure to keep the center clean decreases foot traffic, making it harder for local businesses to thrive. It depresses property values in the neighborhoods, and critically can negatively impact our city's reputation, making it more difficult to bring in high-quality businesses. We as a city invest significant resources in maintaining our public spaces, roads, and parks. We should expect the same commitment and excellence from the private entities that profit from our community. Not that long ago, the city asked for input from the community about this actual subject, and if memory serves, the feedback was convincing. The community wants the city to adopt stronger measures to hold the commercial property owners accountable. This should include establishing clear and forcible standards for property maintenance, landscaping, and waste management, implementing a proactive inspection schedule, and creating a mechanism for escalating fines for persistent underdressed violations. By doing this, we are not burdening businesses, we are protecting our economic engine and enhancing our quality of life. We are sending a clear message that Lake Forest is a city that takes pride in its appearance, a city that is open for business, and a city that demands a high standard from all stakeholders. Thank you for your time and consideration on this vital issue. I look forward to working with you to make a cleaner, more vibrant Lake Forest for everybody.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Mark Hermanson.
I do apologize, I'll have to go quick because I've got quite a few things. We've been up here discussing the issue on Malabar, and now you guys are trying to remove the only parking we have. We sent in requests to the city asking why. The Attorney General stated flat out, local authorities have the power to create resident-only parking programs to manage parking in California under Vehicle Code 22507. However, this power does not extend to discriminating between different types of residents within the permitted area. The permits must be available to all residents of adjacent streets regardless of whether they live in a single-family home or in a condo. The opinion was intended to ensure equity and accessibility in residential parking programs, to prevent municipalities from creating rules that favor homeowners or single-family homes from condos. Now, I won't pretend to be an attorney, we do have our own city attorney here, and I'm sure there's a loophole in the law that allows you guys to do this, but I think the city could at least show the respect of answering multiple requests as to why this is going on. My second comment that eventually I would like to have an answer to, our city manager has stated part of the reason Malabar got parking permit was for street sweeping, yet the only two places you guys have signs to ticket people are where the residents of Bela Palermo park. So apparently, street sweepers have no issues for the residents on Malabar. Their cars apparently don't block it, but we get ticketed. The optics on that say one thing, discrimination, and discrimination only. The third comment I have is more information FYI for you guys. Somehow, my communications with this city have gotten to the residents of Malabar. I have had a person in front of my home taking a picture of my front door. They have spoken that they have been down in our private gated community taking pictures of our garage, and somehow, an email that I don't use too often, but I've used with the city, I've gotten nasty emails. My computer is now being looked at by RIT Department before I go to the Sheriff's Department. I don't think it rises to the level of criminal, but there is one name that consistently comes up that seems to be buddy-buddy with the residents on Malabar. I'm not ready to make an accusation yet, but we will be having my computer looked at. Between this, the being screamed at in the streets, the little pseudo-threats by the residents of Malabar, if I were you guys, I would go to your parking commission and check and see how, how much your people are talking to those guys, because that is ridiculous. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Andrea Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and staff. I want to thank you all, yay, thank you, I'm not complaining. I want to thank all of you for the presentation from the representative from the State Insurance Commissioner's Office. It was good to see. They are continuing to work with insurance companies and also provide an option for a minimum of eight homeowners to mitigate hazardous areas around their homes to hopefully get some premium relief. I was also pleased to see, I was out of town, so I couldn't come to the meeting, so I watched on YouTube, so, and I thought I'd just come and tell you how pleased I am with, with the results. I was pleased to see the presentation by Kelly Lee, who I spoke to at one of the events on Portola Hills. She's a wonderful young lady, and she provided a progress report on the grid and wiring upgrades, and I think I asked for that from the council a while ago, and I appreciate that you followed up on that. And it seems that things are going nicely. I think she said 90% of the wiring, the hardening of the wiring was complete. That's good news. And I think we can thank Serbo, Councilmember Serbo, for making this all happen, possibly. Thank you, and also all of you for giving him the okay to do that. And this just reminds me to acknowledge the staff for always providing progress reports and updates on our city projects. I really thank you all for that, all of you. You do a good job. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Dorina Tan.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here again. I was here to speak to you in early September. I'm repeating the petition to address the issue of Serrano Creek Park eucalyptus trees in the lower portion of the creek area adjacent to Serrano Road. I've submitted a petition signed by 63 members of our community in the Oaks and in Parkwood Estates, and you can read that petition that reiterates our request to thin out, replace with other types of trees that are less volatile than the eucalyptus. After the fires up in Altadena and Paradise and Palisades, we realized that we have a serious potential fire issue, and there have been members of our community that have been denied fire insurance, or whose fire insurance has skyrocketed. We urge you to prevent another problem in our community. Once one of those trees goes off, that's going to go in a trail clear through the city of Lake Forest, continue through Serrano Creek into the woods, and all the homes are at risk. It's better to take care of the problem before it presents itself, and with our climate change that's been occurring, you realize that this is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. I know you will not respond to me, but I would like to know what has been done so far to address this issue by the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public commenter is Jessica Lort.
Hello. This is my third council, City Council meeting, and I have, and I have to say, I am very disappointed. I thought with your position, titles, and interest in the Lake Forest community, we could make progress by addressing the fire hazard at Serrano Park. Instead, all I've seen are council members rushing up to be front and center for a picture opportunity, basking in the spotlight of someone else's achievements. At the last meeting, I witnessed a CFO and council members trying to be in the center of a photo for heroic actions of Tavia Vial. I wish that same enthusiasm for photo opportunities could be channeled into helping us take action to clean up the park. Why not stand front and center with us on this important cause? Wouldn't you feel prouder being recognized for being part of a cause that prevented a tragedy? I brought pictures of the park on our last meeting. How many of you took a minute to look at them? Probably none. If you had, you would have seen dead eucalyptus trees, palm trees with dead fronds hanging and waiting to ignite, dead brush, trash, and overgrown bushes that haven't been maintained and are taking up nearly half of the city sidewalk. If you took a moment to look at my pictures and live in the city of Lake Forest, I hope this caught your attention. I hope it made you think and say, holy crap, this park is a fire hazard, and the city of Lake Forest needs to step up and fix this issue. We need to help the residents and make a difference. I've spoken to several neighbors who have lived in my residence for over 30 years, and they've been trying to get the park cleaned up all this time and still waiting for progress. This cause has been ongoing for more than three decades. Isn't it time to take action? I've lived here for over 30 years myself and have only seen the park thinned out once after a tragic, tragic, tragic incident where a little girl was raped. That awful event happened more than 30 years ago, and since then, nothing has been maintained. The overgrown bush, brush has become a haven for delinquency, posing risk of fire or violent crimes since the thick vegetation obstructs visibility. How can we get our cause on the agenda to receive meaningful feedback? It feels like one is, it feels like no one is willing to take responsibility or clarity, accountability. This isn't an HOA issue, so let's not deflect and point it in that direction. I know the HOA has a role, but this is about the city or county stepping up to maintain what belongs to the city of Lake Forest. Let's focus on the bigger picture and not get stuck on the minor details. We get notices saying that the county has started discussions, but takes rarely, but talks rarely lead anywhere.
If you could finish your comments, please.
Trees are marked for removal and have been given context, and nothing gets done. What will take to see progress? Act of violence, a fire, or yet another rape?
Thank you for your comments.
Our last public commenter is Brian McMillan.
Good evening. My name is Brian McMillan. I'm not a resident, but I am a property owner. Thank you again for your service. It seems most of you are making life-changing decisions affecting the lives of Lake Forest businesspeople, but are not too clear on exactly what massage is in this, in this city. Massage means any method of pressure on, this is right out of the, out of the, your codebook, massage, city ordinances. Massage means any method of pressure on, or friction against, or stroking, kneading, rubbing, tapping, pounding, vibrating, or stimulating the external parts of the human body with the hands, or with the aid of any mechanical or electrical apparatus. We're talking about the, the piece of, of, the herb ball here. A massage establishment means any establishment where any person or business permits to be engaged in massages, baths, or health treatments involving massages or baths as regular functions. This would include hotels, health clubs, many other businesses other than massage businesses. The, some examples of what Lake Forest calls massage is acupressure, body wrap. Body wrap is massage in the city of Lake Forest. Holistic Health Center is a, is massage. Holistic Health is a wellness approach that considers the whole person, physical, mental, emotional, and social, and spiritual, rather than treating symptoms. It's considered massage in, in, in the, in the city of Lake Forest. Incredible. Hydrotherapy is considered massage. Steam baths are considered massage. Saunas are considered massage. A public bath is any place where given steam baths, sponge baths, sun baths. This is massage in the city of Lake Forest. Sports massage, stress management centers, all stress management centers are considered massage. Anything, this is incredible, coming up now. Any medical treatment in a doctor's office, emergency center, or hospital performed by anyone except a physician, surgeon, or RN is considered massage in this, in this city. So that means nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, phlebotomists, virtually everybody that works in a hospital is performing massage. This city staff has the ability to close down hospitals, hotels- This city staff has the ability to close down hospitals, hotels, anybody that allows. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you for your comments.
That's it, Mayor.
That's it. Thank you all for your comments. Concerning the Serrano Creek, we actually, I met with the City Public Works Director, and we're working on a bid to clean the bid. Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. Just want to let you guys know that we're, the city staff's working on it. They got a bid out, so thank you so much. So that brings us to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the city consent calendar are considered routine, and will be acted by one vote. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the city council or staff requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove from the consent calendar?
We do have public comment on item number five.
Okay. We'll come to that. Do it, colleagues. Okay. And then, public comment. There are warrants on the register from the County of Orange. I am an employee from the County of Orange, and I do not work for the departments that generate the warrants. Because the County of Orange is a public agency, and because I do not work for the departments in question, I have determined that I have a noninterest in the warrants, and I'll be voting on the item. That brings us to all but number, item number five. So we have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
That brings us to item number five. Madam City Clerk?
The title of item number five is Certification of Warrant Register.
Who pulled?
And our public commenter is Brian McMillan.
My name is Brian McMillan. I object to check number eight oh seven two thirty-eight written to Best Best and Krieger LLP for a hundred and five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. I object to the city paying your lawyers anything to research how to enact even more egregious massage laws to prevent more business owners from following their dreams of having their own businesses in Lake Forest. The massage moratorium is a colossal waste of money and city resources. Mayor Voits, you have said multiple times that small businesses are the backbone of our city. You even went on to say without small businesses, we would have nothing. You are correct. The city planning department has researched if massage businesses are a threat to public health, safety, public health, or public welfare countless times, and reached the same conclusion every time. Massage businesses do not threaten anyone or anything in the city. You have shown, but, but you have shown by your votes that your intentions are not to protect the city residents, but rather to punish anyone who wants to set up a services business you don't like, especially Asian businesses. You want to punish landlords for renting to these businesses. You all admitted that massage businesses are not a threat to the community of anything. Mayor Protemp Peceno invented some problems having to do with compatibility, that's in quotes, saying, saying that all message businesses attract bad people, bad people like his colleague, Councilman Yu. The same Councilman Yu that explained in detail about how beneficial the herbal wellness businesses are and how relaxing and quiet these therapies are. Councilman Peceno, I think you owe Councilman Yu an apology, along with other Asian Americans in the community. They are taking advantage of therapies you know nothing about. Even the most reasonable person on this council, I consider, Councilman Tetmer, after spending considerable time in a public meeting expounding on the reasons for the moratorium is a bad idea, he voted to, for this moratorium the very next meeting. I think it's a sellout. The city, just remember, the city can pass any municipal code it wants, except when that code violates rights granted by the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of California. Something to remember. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, I'll take a motion for item number five.
Move item number five.
I'll second that.
There's a bit of motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Madam Clerk, this brings us to action items and discussion. Please read the title to item number twelve.
The title of item number twelve is Capital Improvement Plan Update.
Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation by our CIP manager, Nas Mukaram. She'll be coming up to go through all of the projects that they have recently finished and what they are working on, and I believe she's going to have an assistant presenter tonight as well.
Yes, we are having a special guest. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Nas Mukaram, the Capital Improvement Program Manager, and I'm back here this evening to present an update on the city's capital improvement program, or CIP, for the third quarter of 2025. For tonight's presentation, I invited Tran Tran, our traffic engineering manager, to join me, as we have multiple projects in construction and upcoming with traffic component, so we can expand upon the traffic aspects of what's going on around our city. So as the end of the second quarter coincided with the end of the city's fiscal year, this is the first update on the twenty-five, twenty-seven CIP. So let's look at our new numbers. We have a total of fifty-eight projects. Forty-three projects are defined in the twenty-five, twenty-seven CIP book, and we have fifteen projects that are carried forwards from previous years. And the total budget for our CIP is at fifty-four point five million. So let's start off with what city team completed since the last quarterly update. Both Baker Ranch Community Park replacement and El Toro irrigation conservation projects are now complete, and the notice of completions were filed in mid-July, notice of completion or what we call NOCs. The city will be reimbursed an estimated amount of seventy-seven thousand in grant funding from Metropolitan Water District for El Toro project. Two projects at Lake Forest Sports Park are complete. These are the synthetic turf replacement and sports park building roof repairs. Landscaping improvements at Normandale Park were completed earlier. Side perimeter fencing is now complete as well. This project installed twelve hundred linear feet of chain link fence to secure access point via the sports park walking path above the soccer fields, as you can see in the aerial photo to the right, where a fire occurred in the late twenty-twenty-three. Zone D asphalt repairs project is also complete. Staff was able to add a full width asphalt overlay for the entire length of Kenyada Road from Lake Forest Drive to Dimension Drive by negotiating with a contractor from project savings. This has improved the driving experience along Kenyada Road significantly. And finally, the installation of all the city's new street name signs are complete. Citywide projects like this take great time and effort from staff, but the impact on the community is very tangible and long-lasting. As you can see, we are off to a great start with our twenty-five, twenty-seven CIP. Staff completed seven projects equating to more than four point five million dollars investment back to the community. Now, let's move on to what is in construction and design. We currently have fourteen projects in construction in our, throughout our city. We have three projects in pre-construction phase and thirteen more in design. Two Heroes Park projects are in construction and near completion. The first one is sports field renovations and the, as well as electrical repairs and LED lighting. Citywide restroom renovations and vintage park renovations are ongoing. Painting of restrooms is complete. We are waiting for fixtures delivery to start replacement of those. At vintage parks, stair repairs are complete, as you can see on the photo to the left, to the right, and the second part, which consists of slope landscaping improvements, will be starting soon. And with that, I pass the mic to Tran to update you on traffic projects, and I will be back to wrap up the presentation with the remainder of projects in design and pre-design.
Thank you, Nas. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Tran Tran, the special guest for tonight, apparently. So I just appreciate your time tonight. What I'm going to go over is some of the traffic improvement projects that we have here in the city and provide an update in all of those. But I think we want to have a little bit of an understanding of some of these projects that are funded by other sources, not just city funds, one of which is the Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program, Lift Them for short. Most of you may know, obviously council members do, but the public may not know that this project or these program, this program that has all these projects is paid by the developer, and it's all paid by the developer. The city doesn't put funding in that. It is specifically to mitigate the traffic that happens when you develop some of these areas and residential areas. So the first project that is under construction is, and substantially complete, is Los Aliso's Boulevard at Rockfield Boulevard. It is a intersection widening or intersection project that we did a little bit of restriping in the area, so we added a, what we call a de facto lane, which is a large shared through and right turn lane that allows the through lane and the right turn lane to go simultaneously when the light is green or when it's red, you can kind of squeeze over to the side. I'm going to refer to this a lot, so that's why I'm taking a little bit of time to explain that. And so you can slide to the side when it's safe to do so on a red. While you stop, you could proceed on. This is specifically for Los Aliso's Boulevard heading westbound and then making that right northbound on Rockfield. So a lot of folks have been using this as of late, and we're happy to say that some of the signal equipment that has come up, we've been watching the intersection, and it's been, it's been going really smoothly. Another project from Lift Them that is substantially complete is the widening at Lake Forest Drive at Geronimo Road. That also included a de facto lane that's actually going southbound on Geronimo Road and hanging a right westbound on Lake Forest Drive. So we complete, we substantially completed that project. You kind of see the striping already on the ground. We have some lingering items that we still are looking for, mainly some of our signal equipment that is lingering for punchless items, but we are substantially complete for that project. And as well as a look, Lake Forest Drive and Rancho Parkway, that is another restriping project that we added another de facto lane in that area. One of the projects you may know, you've probably driven through it throughout your time in the last couple of weeks, maybe a month or so. Our CIP group has been doing a wonderful job trying to accelerate this project. That's why you see the K-Rot out here on Bacon, Tribeca slash Irvine Boulevard. We are widening this area. We're adding dual left turns for future traffic movements and current traffic movements. So pardon our mess while we make this intersection a lot better for the future and hopefully near future. And so we are doing that, and so we advise the public to kind of maybe choose alternate routes while we finish up this project. We hope and we anticipate that this project will be completed hopefully before the summer of twenty-twenty-six. So we have some projects in the Lift Them program that are currently under design, one of which is the big Geronimo intersection widening project. It's a huge undertaking in this location. You kind of see our reimagination of this area. If you drive the area and if you are on Geronimo Road, you know how much you need that dual left turn pocket. The single left turn pocket is great, but you just have long queues. So this intersection project is a widening that allows for dual left turns for all legs of the intersection, including de facto lanes, so you could make better traffic movements when this is said and done. Irvine is leading this project. We are joint venture on this in regards to our programs, and so we are currently in the design phase, but it will take a little bit of time. If you guys know, there is large SCE transmission towers that we have to coordinate and relocate for this project, in addition to some of the nice slope landscaping that we are working with the HOAs with. And then I'm going to move towards the metals. So some of you may have known this as an NACOS development. Our management worked out a development agreement in regards to having the metals pay for some traffic improvements along Big Parkway. And so this was fully paid for at the moment from the metals development, one of which you've already seen, and Nas and her group has already completed, which is Bacon, Bath and Bay. So that was kind of updated a couple of years back. But now we're working on another project on Big Parkway, which is Big Parkway and Toledo Way. This project specifically addresses the need for dual left turns on Toledo Way. Today, there's only a single left turn. We have a lot of folks from our communities making that left turn going towards a five freeway, so this is a project that is definitely worthwhile. Again, pardon our mess when we start construction. We hope to be in construction and bid this out early next year and then be in construction sometime in the summer of this upcoming year. So looking forward to that project as well. And including in this project, not only do we have dual left turns on Toledo Way, we're adding a de facto turn lane as well. So you're going to have some good movement actually upstream eastbound on Big Parkway as well. So another developer fee-based program is Foothill Circulation Phasing Program, FCPP for short. This is something we inherited from the county in regards to some of the development up in the foothill area, so this is all the mitigation measures that's left over from that program that we have taken on as city staff and working on to finish out. One of which, council, you've already saw the word of it in the previous council meeting, the El Toro projects. We kind of bundled everything up so that we get a better economy scale when we go out to bid, and we certainly did. So the project is the El Toro Road, Geronimo Road Intersection Widening Project, again, dual left turns on El Toro Road and a de facto on Geronimo Road. That helps the alignment, helps a little bit of our traffic flow, helps me operationally so I can make simultaneous lefts so they don't hit each other. So that's a, that's a, that's a big plus to be flexible at that intersection, knowing that El Toro is heavily traveled. In addition to that, talking about kind of safety measures, we are including raised medians on El Toro Road, as well as a little bit of resurfacing while we're there. That is going to be in between Geronimo Road and Tribeca Road, so look forward to that. We did bundle this up with a city-funded project, so this is not, this is the only project that is not funded by FCPP, which is the El Toro, El Toro Road, Tribeca Road arterial median improvements. Currently today, there's some, we call it channelizers, delineators, sticks, if you will, sticking up in the median right now. We're going to make it better and put some, some concrete median, raised medians there to make sure that the, the movements are sufficient. And the last FCPP project that is currently in design, and I'll close the books on this program, is Los Aliso's Maryland's and Maryland's at an intersection line to add dual left turn pockets. This is something that the city of Lake Forest is taking on, but we're partnering with city of Mission Vale in coordination with them, as well as the school district, as the winding will take place, and it's very tight in that area. So we're currently in design, going through some environmental processes and some right away discussions. So you may not see this until probably the summer of two, twenty-twenty-seven is what we're anticipating, and just, it's just because there's a lot of coordination, a lot of work that needs to go into this. And I would not want to leave without talking about the traffic signal synchronization projects. This is one of my pride and joy in regards to what we've done so far, and a huge accomplishment from our public works team to, and council, to allowing us to go after these grant projects from OCTA. Some folks don't know that this funding program provides ninety percent of the cost of the entire project, so we get a ninety percent discount while we match ten percent. And what that has done is provided something what, that I would like to show you in the next slide, well, before the next slide. Those funding projects funded these current construction projects on Bacon, Rockfield, as well as Portola, Santa Margarita Parkway, and then signal timing a little bit on Irvine Boulevard and the TSSPs. But not only is it signal timing, it's also signal equipment. And the signal equipment that we're still continuing to get is managing some of the, and that's helping us manage some of these active construction projects, a lot of traffic going through it. So how do we manage that? Very, very carefully. And why I say that is that when we look at these cameras, we look at it every single day throughout the workday to evaluate whether or not we need to adjust any signal timing on the fly when construction activity, school activity, what have you, is going on. We are looking at those. Those, that's why the TSSP is so vital and some of the, the pride of what I do for the, the city and the engineering, the traffic engineering side, is that we get these and be able to help the residents get through their day without a hitch, hopefully. And so with that, I will hand it back to Nas to finish out all of the great CIP projects the public works team is doing. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tran. So continuing with our other projects, we have three projects in pre-construction phase. This council awarded the Lake Forest Sports Park Edgeback Replacement tonight. And both pickleball court installation at El Toro Park and Foothill Ranch Boxer Cross Ring Installation right now are in advertisement. And actually the bids openings are tomorrow. On the street improvement side, we are working on multiple projects we plan to advertise for construction later this year or next year. Lake arterial wall enhancement in Southwest Lake Forest, we just finalized the conceptual design as you can see here on the top right. And we are getting a design contract in place for consultant to kickstart design phase this month. CDBG funded ADA ramps, CDBG funded funding is utilized to do our ADA ramps. The next phase is going to be Phase 15. We had eight 16 ramps identified in the neighborhood south of Los Alises Boulevard. Eight of these ramps were constructed as part of Phase 14 ADA ramps project a couple of years back. The other eight are identified to be included in Phase 15. And citywide street sidewalk repairs, we are getting ready to advertise that one for construction soon. Now that Zone D asphalt repairs are complete, we are preparing the construction documents for Zone D Slurry Seal to get it ready for advertisement in early 2026. We are also working on Civic Center Slurry Seal project and are moving it along with Zone D together. And Big Parkway resurfacing will be our next big arterial resurfacing project being planned for later in 2026. We are also working on annual citywide park concrete trail repairs to be advertised for construction soon. And Nature Park and Lake Forest Park and Peachwood Park improvements. We have about another 21 projects in our 2527 CIP program. Some of these projects will be funded in fiscal year 2627. So we will be waiting for approval of funding prior to starting them. However, there are currently six projects in the pre-design phase that staff is actively working on and I would like to touch upon here. So Kavanaugh Park, we had the first community outreach meeting on September 6th and a second community outreach event is planned for October 29th. Etnis Skate Park Building is also in the community outreach phase. Our Community Services Department is working closely with the consultants to take in residents' input and develop the conceptual designs. Once the conceptual designs are ready, we will advertise the project to get consultants to initiate design. We are also developing the scope for Lake Forest Sports Park building renovations, Etnis Skate Park building improvements, and also create drainage repairs to request proposals for design. And for Nature Park Trail Connections, we are working on preliminary investigation for right of way impacts. So in summary, we completed seven CIP projects. We have 14 projects in various phases of construction. Three projects are in pre-construction phase. We have 13 projects in design and we are actively working on six projects in pre-design. This concludes our report. Thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions.
Well, let's bring it. Do we have any public comments?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, bring you back to council, council. Yes, Councilman Servo, probably pickleball.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. What I love about where you put things together for our staff report is you break down each one of these with pictures, with location, with definition, funding, all those kinds of things. So to my phrase, the biggest room is the room for improvement. You guys are rock stars. So thank you very much for putting that together. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but maybe just a general overview, maybe this is a question for Tran to come up. In terms of some of the, the traffic changes that are happening, what's the genesis in terms of, are there studies that have been done? Is it residential feedback? Is it the city actively looking at intersections to accomplish some of these things? The one I'm kind of concerned about, there's one that's called 28T11 in there, which is a light that's allocated for 2027, 28, 29 out in Live Oak Canyon, where basically where Cook's Corner is and putting a light in there. I know it's not funded yet. It's, that hasn't been designed or anything, but it's on there. So getting way ahead of that. But maybe what was the impetus for that particular intersection for proposing a light?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Servo. So basically to answer your first question in regards to how we come about this, majority of it's studies, mitigation projects that we kind of touch upon and simple maintenance in regards to some of the asphalt work that we're doing. At the end of the day, for the specific location at Live Oak Canyon and South Canyon Road, that was something that triggered through a signal warrant, meaning that we have to go through certain warrants from the state side to see if there's enough volume that's going through there, are there any accidents in there? And I think some of us are aware of some of the accidents and concerns that are out there and really evaluate that intersection, whether or not it's appropriate to have a traffic signal. A couple of years back, that was identified as a location for our 94th signalized intersection. At this time, it's actually a great question because we have the Traffic Operational Improvement Study that council asked us to look into a couple of years, like a year back. We're wrapping that up as we speak and I'll be bringing that back to the council because that does speak upon what is going to, what can we imagine at that intersection? So we're looking at a lot of different things. It's currently looking like the intersection could potentially look at a roundabout or a signal. So we have a lot of ideas of looking at how we can manage the traffic in that general area. And so that's, that's where we're going with it and we'll bring it back to council when it's available.
Okay. Well, thanks for that explanation. And of course, this caught my eye because I look at return on investment and the fact that we've got options we're considering. I mean, it's budgeted apparently for $900,000. So I know everything costs a whole bunch of money in these projects. So I'm just trying to, again, we'll get to that point, understand what's the value of this versus the expense that we have to go through. So thank you for that explanation. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Ah, that brings us to Mayor Protem Piquenyo.
Yes. So on slide 27, you're, I know that next month, the El Toro Pickleball Court is putting out for bid tomorrow and we're going to award it next month, but I have a bunch of questions I want to ask about it. So I don't know if I should ask for consensus to put it on the agenda or we can put it agenda to speak about that again. So like I said, I have a bunch of questions that I have. And so, I mean, I can ask them tonight, but I would rather us as a council talk about just that alone. So if we can put that on the agenda or do I need consensus?
Yeah, we just need direction to put it on the agenda and we can have a discussion of that if that's what the council would like to do.
I got consensus, yeah.
Right, there you have it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the great report. You know, the thing that we celebrating this month is planning and the fact that these things that you guys are doing to improve our city is never ceasing. So thank you for the projects that are in completion, in progress, and those that are being planted. You know, the thing that caught my eye is that the amount of, amount of resources that weren't cities. We have 90% Orange County Transportation Corridor during our synchronization. We had grants. I thank you for being, using the utilization of money that's out there for us. And so these improvements will be great for mitigating traffic. You know, mobility is a huge thing for everybody when they're going to and from. We don't want to get stuck in traffic jams. And so we appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you for making our parks more beautiful and more useful because pickleball is an up and coming thing. As, as Councilman Servo would tell you, that there's a huge demand out there for it. So thank you so much, guys, and we appreciate your improving our city in such great ways. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, this is a receiving file, so there will be no vote taken on this. But Madam City Manager, this is your time. Do you have anything to report?
No, I have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Okay, that brings me to Councilwoman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things, kind of let everybody know about what we as council members do behind the scenes and in the community and kind of the progress of what's going on. So there was a fantastic luncheon the Chamber of Commerce hosted and we had District Attorney Todd Spitzer and we had Don Barnes from the Orange County Sheriff and the host of Diane Dixon at this event, which really helps give us a lot of confidences locally leaders that we are in really good hands in terms of law enforcement, how it's being applied and how Orange County differs greatly from Los Angeles. And talking about some of the obstacles and some of the opportunities and some of the great things that they're putting into place and being proactive about this. I really appreciated them drilling down into some questions that Assemblywoman Dixon offered there. So great to attend that. I also attended the AYSO Lake Forest Region 85 Volunteer Luncheon this past Saturday. It's our 50th anniversary this year. And then I also want to ask our city manager, if you could remind us about the policy on how we get consensus for a future agendized item, please?
Certainly. So the city council has a policy called consensus for placing items on the agenda. And basically it says that council members can request an item to be placed on a future city council agenda for consideration. And it would require the consent of one other council member. So two of you would have to say you would like something to move forward. Now, each council member is limited to introducing no more than four agendized items per calendar year. Now, if a council member would like to request beyond four, consensus can be reached, but it must be achieved with a super majority vote of four council members. And so I believe Councilmember Servo is in the category of in excess of four requests. So we just wanted to remind the council of what your policy is when that condition occurs.
Thank you. Yes, I did check with our city clerk and she informed me that I've done four so far this year. So I'm just kind of lay out what I'm asking here. So in the City of Lake Forest, we have a number of really great amenities. And we have a time change that's coming up on November 2nd. So what I'm looking to see if we can get consensus from my colleagues is concerning the facilities that we have in the morning. As we, as the time change occurred, it's going to get darker earlier. And so there's maybe some parks or some places that people are using currently. And if we have the ability, if they have lights there currently, the ask would be to have staff look into, you know, when is sunrise happening? And what would we have to do to adjust and maybe have an hour of lights at some of these facilities that are being currently used? So for example, Hero's Park, it has lights, but we don't have anybody out there at 7 o'clock that's using the park. And also this would consider what staff time would be involved if we opened up things. So there are pickleball courts, there's other basketball courts, there's other amenities that might be something that if we said, all right, let's take a look at that and decide at a future meeting that we want to change some of the ordinances or I guess the directions in terms of when things can be opened and lighting provided. So the idea would be, for example, at Portola Park, I've had people come to me and say, you know what? We love playing before we go to work, but now it's going to get darker earlier. And would you guys maybe consider having the lights on for an hour at same time that we're playing now, but just when it's dark? So that's my ask is to have staff look into what are the amenities that we have? What kind of staffing would be necessary if we did something like this? And then have an opportunity to vote on whether or not we offer lighting for those early morning hours for those parks and amenity locations.
I don't see a problem with that. I thought that we changed the hours and daylight savings times already.
Just as, as a reminder, we can't have a discussion about this item. We can just, we can just vote on consensus.
Yeah, put it on consensus.
If there's consensus, we can bring it back and have that conversation.
May I ask a question? So I'm trying to understand the, your comments earlier to tell us what's allowed. You're allowed four. He's used his four and he's still seeking consensus. So I'm not quite tracking. He needs a super majority.
Correct. Your policy does-
So even though you have four, you can still keep asking as long as you can get four people to say.
Correct.
Okay, so we're good to go.
Did we get consensus from three others besides myself? We have council member you, council member, I mean, Mayor Boitz.
Here's what I'm prepared to support. I would like to see if we can get an update in our weekly report as to what currently is the practice for the city in terms of time change, hours of operation, where that's relevant and things like that. So I get a better understanding of what's the lay of the land currently. And then we can bring this back and see if there's a need to make a change. I presume there's some automation that goes on in terms of some of the programming for lights and whatnot. So it's not a send staff out to throw switches kind of thing.
Right.
Anyway, that'd be my preference would be give us something in the weekly so we can at least get the understanding of the baseline. That, I don't know if I need consensus for that, but that would be-
Is that substitute consensus item?
I don't know if I need consensus to say. That would help me.
Okay, so it doesn't look like I have consensus for my idea, but Councilmember Teddermer, his idea, I'm open to that too, is just to say, okay, let's take a look and, you know, study this before we even get to that point of considering a specific resolution.
Yeah.
So I have, I would consent to that.
Am I seeking consensus then?
Yes, you are.
No, no, we're, we're just going to put some information in the weekly update on.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And finally, just want to promote, we have the Spooktacular event for families. It's going to be a lot of fun this coming Saturday. And I've had a couple of people ask me, I said, you know, in terms of getting a costume and whatnot, what are the most popular ones that people are looking for? So I guess pirates are a popular costume. And so they were asking me, well, the hook is really kind of important for pirates. And asked me, where do they go for that? Well, of course, I told them the secondhand store. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Councilman Teddermer. Beat that.
I attended a grand opening for Ono Hawaiian BBQ, which was part of the, Mayor Protem, I think you were responsible for getting that off the ground. So I appreciate that. I also attended the annual Chamber Ledge Luncheon with Sheriff Barnes and DA Spitzer and Assemblymember Dixon. I also attended the Cal Cities Annual Conference, which this year was up in Long Beach. So I was there for two of the three days. And I look forward to the Spooktacular coming up on Saturday. That is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to Councilman Yu.
I also attended Chamber of Luncheon and also the Cal Cities. Nothing further here.
Brings us to Mayor Protem Piquenyo.
Thank you, Mayor. So I too attended the Ono Hawaiian BBQ Grand Opening. It's located on El Toro Road by where the Home Depot is. It's really good food. And I went to the Legislative Luncheon. And I also, a couple of weekends ago, did the Southwest Sips where staff and the neighbors or the, in the neighborhood in Southwest Lake Forest, we had coffee and Amy and Jonathan provided coffee and burritos, which, thank you for that. And the same day, they had the Labors of Love where Love Lake Forest went out and blessed a gentleman who gives from his heart, Robert Lopez, he's an Air Force veteran who Home Depot actually donated time, people and material to repaint his house. And they also blessed him with a barbecue pit and, and all the fix. And so that was a good thing to go to. And I went to the Cal Cities event. And I went to the session on how the central service provider area worked on their homeless shelter. And I went to another one on how to boost community engagement. I was telling Kevin from Finance that the lady, one of the people from the city way down south said, yeah, we were trying to get people to come into our chambers. And she goes, so we passed a 1% sales tax. I said, well, that'll do it. I also went to one for wildfire preparedness, maximizing resources, making crime solving more efficient with all tools. And I went to the Prop 36 Implementation Breakout Session, which was pretty scary on, they're still trying to find funding on, on a proposition that we as the tax, or as the voters passed. And for some reason, it's not, it's still not funded. Go figure. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also went to the Cal Cities Long Beach Convention. I went to the Ono Hawaiian BBQ. Got to say, it brings a taste of the islands to Lake Forest. And so if you want a good Hawaiian meal, Lake Forest has it. Went to the Chamber Luncheon, which was actually a law enforcement luncheon with Sheriff Don Barnes. Barnes and our, our District Attorney Todd Spitzer. And, you know, one of the things that we all strive for here on city council is public safety, but the fact is that it's nice to have a DA that'll prosecute criminals and a sheriff's department that will arrest criminals. And so, I've got to give a, a great big thank you to our law enforcement DA and our law enforcement agency, Orange County Sheriff Department. So, the fact is, that makes us all look that much better. So I went to a, an OCTA mayor's meeting the other day and our OCTA representative, Mark Teddermer was there, along with Supervisor Don Wagner, both sits on the OCTA board. They're always looking for ways to improve traffic mitigation, along with the City of Lake Forest and in partnership with the city. And so, that does so much good. It's the secretizations being paid for by OCTA, Measure M money. So the fact is that that's coming back to Lake Forest and it's doing wonders. And it's actually one of the reasons why we have such great streets in Lake Forest because we have our public works and our traffic that does a great job in keeping up with our, our asphalt out there. And Quinata Loop was a big, big success because that was an old road and needed improvement. So, thank you so much for that. With that, I'm going to close this meeting and thank you all for watching and I'll see you at the next one. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.